Ryan Singer, who is our Senior Director of Land Use and Commission Operations, is now going to outline some general information about our remote public hearing and how to participate.
Yes, good morning. Verbal testimony may be provided online through the NYC Engage portal or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register online through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. A link to join the hearing will be emailed to you after you've completed the registration process. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial-in participant hotline at US toll-free 1-877-853-5247. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participation ID and the password is the numeral 1. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. Please note that whether you are accessing this meeting online or by phone, you must register if you want to speak. Please also note that your testimony will be audio only. The commissioners will hear you but will not be able to see you. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be notified and granted temporary speaking privileges by staff, so please listen closely for your name to be called. If you're accessing the hearing online, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You should see a notice on your screen allowing you to unmute your microphone. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you'll be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute your phone. When the testimony is complete or your three minutes have expired, you must press star six again to mute yourself. Please note that muting and unmuting registered speakers may take a moment as we are adjusting to the new hearing format. So thank you for your patience. For those accessing the hearing through the online live stream who have not yet registered to speak but decide they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register through the upcoming meetings page on the NYC Engage portal. It is not possible to testify through the online live stream without having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you must first register through the dial-in participant hotline that I described a moment ago. It is not possible to testify via telephone without first having registered. Please limit your remarks to three minutes and speak clearly into your microphone. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. Thus, Chair will announce when the time limit has been reached, at which point your microphone will be muted. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Make sure that if you're watching the proceedings during livestream, that the livestream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo and feedback. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. The mailing and email address can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that the remote public hearing and all testimony provided is being recorded.
Thank you, Ryan. And with that, Madam Secretary or Mr. Secretary, please begin the meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage portal. Today is Wednesday, October 21st, 2020. I will now call the role. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cerulo. Commissioner Cerulo.
Commissioner Cerulo expects to join in a few minutes.
Commissioner De La Use.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
I'm here, but I note that you might want to check the livestream. I'm looking at it on another device and it shows that it's off the air. Thank you. But here.
Commissioner Marie.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rappashy.
Here.
A quorum is present.
And, Madam Secretary, if, or Ryan, if we could check with respect to the livestream because I want to make sure that the votes that we take are actually being livestreamed. So if we could for a moment?
Yes, so the YouTube livestream, we have confirmed, and the livestream on our website is processing, but it appears to be going. Let me check with production just one moment.
Thank you. Apologies to the commissioners, but I think it's important, and I thank Commissioner Levin for checking. It's important that we have public access to our meeting.
Okay, looks like it's on.
Yep.
Thank you, Ryan. So, Mr. Secretary, I think we're good to go.
Thank you, Chair Lago. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, October 7th, 2020.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any one of... The minutes are approved.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page one. Reports, calendar item number one, citywide, C200143MMY, in the matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning Rikers Island public place mapping, or favorable report on calendar number one, Chair Lago.
Actually, I just need to interrupt. We are having audio issues on the commission livestream, and I want to make sure that these votes are recorded. So can we just get a moment?
Yes, thank you. I'll take advantage of this time to let the commission know that yesterday, the city issued its Where We Live Report, and which addresses fair housing issues. The depart... This is principally the work of HPD, but the Department of City Planning and NITRO were both very heavily involved. And so we will arrange at a future review session to have a presentation on where we live with a special focus on the land use, the city planning facets of it.
Great, that'll be a very good presentation, I'm sure.
Any update, Ryan?
Yes, we have audio on the YouTube stream, and we are working to switch that to be the mainstream. So we have, I mean, we're complying with Open Meetings law since we have the livestream both on YouTube and we're recording, so we can proceed.
And the question that I have, Ryan, if someone is looking at the proceedings on our website and is not having the audio, is there a message there pointing them to the YouTube where they can also have the audio in addition to the video?
Yeah, we will, we're switching the livestream so that it is, it is all coming from YouTube. So that, so that it'll all be one livestream, yes. They will be able to access the audio.
Is that currently happening, or is it something that we need to wait for?
Let me just check, I think we have the order come out. It appears that it is currently, it's been switched, yes. We can proceed now.
Great, thank you. And I will note then that it's been approved. And, Mr. Secretary, perhaps you could again call the first item for vote.
My pleasure, Chair Lago. This is the reports section on page one. Calendar item number one, citywide, C200143MMY, in the matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning Rikers Island public place mapping, or favorable report on calendar number one, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo. Commissioner De La Use.
Yes, I think this will be one of my top public place mappings. Thank you.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marie.
No.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rappashy.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar item number one. Calendar item number two, Borough of Staten Island, CD3, N200322RCR, in the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 957, 949, and 945 Ionia Avenue for adoption on calendar item number two, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Use.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marie.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rappashy.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number two. Calendar item number three has been laid over. Calendar items number four and five, Borough of Staten Island, CD1. Calendar number one, N210057ZAR. Item number five, N210058ZAR, in the matter of an applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 416 to 420 10th Avenue for adoption on calendar numbers four and five, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Use.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marie.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Ortiz.
Commissioner Ortiz may have had some technical issues.
When she rejoins, we can again ask about her vote on this matter.
Commissioner Rappashy.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers four and five. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page four. Borough of Brooklyn, counter items number six and seven, CD12, item number six, C200086ZMK. Item number seven, N200087ZRK. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 1501 to 1555 60th Street rezoning.
Our first speaker, speaking on behalf of the applicant, is Eric Palatnik.
Hi, you should be able to hear me now.
We do, Mr. Palatnik.
Hello. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Thank you for having me, and thank you for making the time for this application this morning. Let me know if it's okay for me to proceed.
Yes, your time has started.
Next page, please. We're pleased to be here today on behalf of a rezoning for an R7A C24 zoning district from an M11 zoning district that, if approved, would facilitate 102 dwelling units over three buildings, including approximately 32 MIH units. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Hello? Don't know if you can hear me?
Yes.
There you go. All right, I just wasted a few seconds there. No, back to the last one, please. Back a page, please. Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
Can you go back one slide, please? I don't know if it's the person controlling the screen. There you go, thank, no, forward one slide, please. The slide with all the buildings, the one with all the buildings. Forward, forward.
There it is.
No, forward. No, it's not showing on my screen on Zoom.
Mr. Palatnik, if...
There you go.
You're having... Palatnik, if you wanted to show the overall site, it is back one.
It's, yes, my screen is, I think there's a difference between what I'm saying and what you're seeing. I'm trying to get the overall slide with the words on it, the buildings with all the words. It shows three buildings. Perhaps that's not coming up? One, back one side.
We have it now.
We have it, we have it up.
Okay, great. I don't see what you see at the same time on my Zoom screen evidently, I apologize. Thank you. So this slide is showing you the rezoning area, which covers three buildings. What we're trying to show you here is the outdated nature of the manufacturing block. Just this singular block is owned manufacturing with R5 surrounding it. Down in the lower right-hand corner, you can see Maple Lanes, which was six, 13 six-story buildings approved through a recent rezoning years, a few years ago, to an R6A development. Next slide, please.
We're on the next slide, Mr. Palatnik. You might want to just call out the number of the presentation.
Okay, so it's not showing, it's not showing. Just so you know, it's not lining up on Zoom the way it is with you. This is showing you...
Not for me either.
I'm flexible, I'll bear with it, so please just be patient with me as we're looking, we're viewing on our screen. This slide that we should all be looking at should be showing you three buildings. It's showing you Site B. It shows you one of the three sites. Next slide, please.
We have the next slide.
The next slide up is probably showing you slides, which I'm not on with you, but probably showing you slides, more of the site, a collision shop, and you might be able to see in the left-hand corner Maple Lanes, which is existing. Next slide.
We have it.
Okay, next slide should be the zoning map change slide. It should be showing you the, on the left side, the existing M11 zoning district, and on the right side, the proposed zoning district, which is an M11 to an R7.
If I could ask, if I could ask to this, okay, we now have the existing and the proposed zoning.
Okay, next slide.
I think there's a lag for the rest of us. I'm still, oh, there we go, it just flashed and disappeared.
I'm glad somebody else is... I'm glad we're all, somebody else is having difficulty too, I don't feel so foolish. Next slide, please, which should be just a, a rendering image, a rendered image of all three buildings. It should say Site A, A9, A, next slide, not the zoning analysis. You should all be seeing three buildings here, buildings A, B, and C. I'll probably leave it here.
There, yes, got it.
I'll freeze right here, I won't move anymore. I'll make it easy because this gives you the picture of what we're trying to do. What this is showing you are the three buildings that we're asking you to rezone. The two, to facilitate through the rezoning. The two buildings on the right are Buildings A and B. They are proposed to be at 75 feet tall. They're proposed to be seven stories, and they're going to have ground floor commercial. The left side is Site C. That butts up against the railroad tracks, as you can see, which is the Bay Ridge line of Long Island Railroad, which we spoke into the MTA and secured their verbal consent to move ahead with the project. That building will be eight stories, 85 feet tall, and it will contain ground floor commercial as well. There will be 31 parking spaces in the overall development. We believe the site makes good sense for a rezoning due to its location on 60th Street, between 15th and 16th avenues, all three of which are wide street. And interestingly, 60th is quite a major artery. If you look at it all the way, it runs all the way from the Statue of Liberty to McDonald Avenue, and along it is symbolic for having larger buildings. During the rezoning process, we did work with Community Board 12. We had numerous hearings, as well as at the Borough President. The neighbors on 59th Street asked us if we would reduce the size of the buildings. We tried to accommodate them by taking a small portion of Buildings A and B off. It reduced the amount of dwelling units by six dwelling, affordable units by six affordable units, but it was something that they asked for. We have since been told by the Borough President that that request has been rejected, and they would just like to see it entirely downzoned on that side of the street to an R6A. That, we believe, would be catastrophic. We would lose a total there of six affordable units, and the total amount of units would drop by 20%. So we are asking now for the proposed rezoning at R7A with a C24 overlay to facilitate these three buildings. Since I got a little messed up, I thank you for asking, providing additional time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner De La Use. And if we could take the image down so that we would be able to see the commissioners, thank you.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. I know it was challenging, especially today. So a couple of questions. How long has the owner owned the property?
The owner has owned the property for at least a decade, maybe longer. The owner is a area resident who has been in the area for a number of decades, so it is, it is a local person.
Okay, and so two things. One is, you described the request or the conversation with the Borough President as being catastrophic. If you could elaborate more, especially for someone who's owned the property for so long, that would be helpful.
Yeah, well, what, the Borough President was asking to reduce the rezoning entirely from, from an R, the proposed R7A on the north side of the street to an R6A. That would, of course, reduce the FAR from, by a 1.0 FAR, from a 4.6, which is proposed, to a 3.6. It would also reduce the amount of affordable units from 32 to 26. The combined impact of that is catastrophic in the sense that the number of dwelling units that are being reduced by, in addition to, we're going to end up losing some commercials as a result of that, in addition to still the requirement to provide the affordable, overall, it doesn't make the project as attractive economically from a financial perspective to make the investment and the risk that's necessary. So the R7A allows for a 4.6 FAR, which essentially allows us to capture the ground floor commercial, which is what we're really anxious for, it's desperately needed in this area. There is no ground floor commercial, local retail mapped between 18th and New Yutriq. So it's really something that's necessary, and that's our justification or rationale, I should say.
Okay. And then the other is, if I recall correctly, you're proposing to map MIH option two. I'm wondering how you landed on that versus option one?
Well, again, that's up, of course, that's up to, we are asking to map, I believe, most option one and two, but option two, option one, 60% of the units would have the same effect on the affordable housing numbers as a reduction in MIH would, in reduction in the zoning districts, when R6A. In other words, if we lowered the, to option one, 26 MIH units would be created as opposed to 32 units, which would be created at the 80% AMI.
No, both option one and option two are 25%, so it's the same number of units, it's just a deeper AMI.
I believe we would lose a couple of units out of, out of the lower AMI. I was of the belief that it's 20, it's a lower percentage of units under the MIH formula.
That's option, I think that's option three. So it's still the same percentage, it's just the depth of availability.
I was unaware of that, thank you for educating me, and I'd be happy to look into that and discuss it with the owner and get back to you.
Great. The department will come back at post-hearing follow-up with clarification about this.
Thank you.
Other questions, Commissioner De La Use?
No, I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Palatnik. One of the main concerns we've heard from the community board and the Borough President has to do with the appropriate scale, particularly on the north side of 60th Street. We're backs up to 59th with, which is an R5 zoning with, you know, two and three-story buildings. I wonder if you could address the appropriateness of the scale that your client is proposing vis-à-vis its neighbors to the north? And particularly, I understand you're proposing a buildings, buildings that you say would be seven stories and 70 feet tall, but in fact, that zoning designation has a 95-foot height limit. So how does that fit against the 59th Street? The row of 59th Street buildings?
Well, in a couple of different ways, which, which we could address. The first is, as our plans depict, even though the district does allow for 95 feet, Buildings A and B have been presented to you. Of course, just in, for informational purposes, plans that show a full buildout at 75 feet. So although the 95 feet is allowed, the 4.6 FAR and the full buildout can be achieved at 20 feet less than the district allows. We did agree to enter into a restrictive declaration to memorialize that onto the properties with the neighbors. The other thing we've, we'd like to point out is that we did provide a rather substantial rear yard of 40 feet to the neighbors in the rear. And with the modifications we, we did propose, which if it were to be accepted, also did take the sixth floor off of, the seventh floor off of Building A and a partial reduction of the top floor in Building B, leaving more room for the neighbors in both of those scenarios. So we believe, either which way, either through the discussion we had at the community board or even as we presented it as proposed, those neighbors have been somewhat protected. Now, of course, there will be a larger building there, I think, which is the underlying issue, that there'll be larger buildings there. But I, I think they've benefited from all the years of being up against an outdated manufacturing zone. It's not uncommon along the wider streets in the city, as you know, to have the wider streets accommodate a larger density, and the narrower side streets behind them, of course, are zoned at a smaller density. So we believe that although it does impact them, we're not, we're not being insensitive to that. We believe it does it in a way that minimizes the impact to them and does it in a way that is sensitive to them. The other thing I should point out is, of course, they're to the north of us. So we, that's another thing as well. So as the sun, as the sun transitions around, there is some impact on their yards from any building that gets constructed, whether it's an R6A or an R7A, makes no difference.
Other questions, Commissioner Levin?
Oh, that's it, thank you for addressing that.
Thank you for the question.
Before calling on Commissioner Ortiz, I'll note that she was having technical difficulties but wishes to be noted as voting in support of the final two items, the Kent Street Brooklyn items. So, Mr. Secretary, if you could record that, and Commissioner Ortiz. Before calling on Commissioner Ortiz, I'll note that she was having technical difficulties, but wishes to be noted as voting in support of the final two items, the Kent Street Brooklyn items. So, Mr. Secretary, if you could record that, and Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you. I, I wanted to inquire about the retail space here. The projections are for over thirty thousand square feet of space, which is significant. It would be a neighborhood-serving district for sure in terms of, you know, industry classification. What kinds of retail do you envision here? And as you look at a map, you know, there are nearby grocery stores along Thirteenth Avenue, along Sixteenth Avenue in the vicinity of this area. So, you know, could you characterize a little bit of the health of those corridors and the degree to which this might be competitive with those areas?
Yeah, sure. We'd be happy to. And it, it, it's a question that, that has come up and that I've thought about and we've analyzed, and we, we've kept it in because it makes sense. As you can tell from just reviewing the block, there's already a furniture store on the block with a, with a retail nature to it, and the block has got all mostly predominantly commercial uses, albeit outdated automotive uses. There, as I mentioned earlier, the, the retail uses that you mentioned are really only mapped nearly half a mile away properly is between them, between New Utrecht and Eighteenth Avenue, is the only really mapped C zones. There's nothing between them. Maple Lanes was just constructed, as we said, thirteen buildings, six stories each. If this rezoning is, is supported and, and approved, there'll be more residential units coming in of approximately a hundred units based upon this rezoning. Thirty thousand square feet sounds like a lot, but when you, you take out all the storage space that might be needed and backroom space for some of these businesses, you're probably left with twenty thousand, twenty-five, twenty-two thousand square feet. It's, that's ten businesses. It's a, it's some coffee shop, it's a dry cleaner, it's local retail in brand-new space that's attractive, which is something also that although, as you pointed out, does exist, we all know that the existing building stock in Brooklyn is rather old, so there's nothing with that freshness to it. I don't believe it will compete. I believe it's going to provide an area that is sort of unto itself right now with more vibrancy on the streetscape that's going to accommodate the residents that are there now and that are coming in. Hope that helps.
Thank you. I, I, I do think, can you hear me? I'm having.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think you should underestimate the challenges of filling thirty thousand square feet of space with neighborhood-serving uses in this location, and wonder about the trade-off of, you know, additional housing units on the ground floor versus retail that might in fact be difficult to build. So I will offer that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. Any other questions from the Commission? Thank you, Mr. Palatnik. Our next speaker on behalf of the applicant is Thomas Lang.
I'm here, Commissioner. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead and please start the clock.
Yes, I'm with the, I'm with the architectural firm of Brickalage Design Designs. I'm the project manager on the job. I mean, the input I'd like to give is, on a design aspect, on a design aspect of the proposal, what we try to do, more or less give it a townhouse feel, if you look at the architectural renderings.
Oh, Chair, we don't see the graphics.
I think you have to show the architectural renderings so I can explain.
If I could ask production if they have the presentation with the renderings?
Can you?
We're seeing.
Right, that's the aerial view.
And what page in the presentation would you like us to go to?
Um, that's fine. I mean, that, that view you have right there of Building A.
We currently.
Right, that's a good one. That's a good one right there. Building B, street view. B eight.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so if you look at the aesthetic, what we're trying to achieve here is, in lieu of having one larger extensive facade, we're trying to break up the facade into more of like a, a larger townhouse-type feel, and we attenuated this with balconies which project over the street line according to Building Code regulations, and we, if you look at the aerial view, if you could just go back, we did provide an extensive amount of outdoor recreation space on the rooftops. And they recessed, abutting the adjacent neighbors on the R five. So that's our, our proposal. I mean, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yes, we can turn it over to the Commissioners, and I see that Commissioner Delos has questions.
Um, thanks for the information. I guess a couple of questions I have, given the proximity to the rail line, I'm wondering what, if you can tell us a little bit about some of the efforts made to ensure that residents wouldn't be impacted by noise, and if you could also go over any elements, any green elements, that would be helpful as well.
Yes, all, all the finestrations abutting the rail lines will have high sound attenuation windows. They, on our discussions with the MTA, they also requested that we have a ten-foot fence so that on the one-story, if you look at the, if you look at Site C, if we can go back to the renderings, we have, you could see we have a one-story setback according to the rear yard regulations required by, by zoning. So one of the requirements from MTA, they wanted a ten-foot fence. Their concern was for debris, like falling on their, on their tracks due to the lower elevation of their track line. But that fence would also serve two purposes. It would protect any debris from being accidentally thrown over into the MTA right away, but it would also be a sound attenuating fence. So in addition, in addition with that, of course, the additional insulation required by the Energy Code will also provide additional sound attenuation for the exterior walls along with the increased sound attenuation in the windows themselves.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Staying with the aerial shot that, that's now up, the, what looks like a one-story, I assume, industrial use between A and B, what is the status of that parcel? It, it, it's not owned by the, by the developer, I, I assume, or is it?
I think, Eric, we have to, the attorney will have to chime. He has closer relations as far as ownership.
I'm afraid that Mr. Palatnik has already testified, and so if you would be able to follow up.
I'm sorry, I don't know the legal ownership of that particular site, but being that it's not part of this, at the time, I don't believe our owner owns that piece.
We will, and place a request to the applicant that they follow up in writing to address Vice Chair Knuckles' question. Any other Commissioners who?
Thank you.
And thank you for the question, Vice Chair. It does stand out in the, in the aerial view. I don't see any other questions from, oh, yes, Commissioner Rompershop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was having a problem on muting. Two quick questions with regards to sequencing or construction. Are you building a steel frame or is this reinforced concrete? And would you build all three simultaneously?
Uh, the current trend is concrete. We have a lot of jobs right now that are being done in concrete due to the, the expeditiousness of erection time for the, a concrete structure vis-à-vis. It goes up relatively quick. So that is actually the current trend in a lot of our projects of similar scope. I'm sorry, what was your other question, sir?
Will all three be built at the same time? And the reason I asked about the construction, I was just curious if you were doing steel frame, are you going to use cranes? I'm thinking about, you know, and if they're all being built at the same time, traffic-wise, what, what impact that would have for the community?
Right, like, like I said, concrete is the current trend due to the rapid, the rapid nature of construction. So I would say it's a good ninety percent chance that these will be concrete. So cranes, of course, will not be involved because everything is pumped up to a pumper, and as far as the, the sequencing, I would think this would have to be phased. This would have to be phased. So I mean, we would probably get concrete done on, you know, pour all the floors on one, move to the next structure. So that would be phased according to each stage of construction. So the main structure would be done, completed on one, then moved to phase two, then the interior fit out started on one, moved to phase two, and three, and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm checking one last time. I do not see any additional raised hands from the Commission, so thank you, Mr. Lang.
Thank you.
I'll note that those are the only people who have signed up to speak. I would ask that we take a moment now, in the event there is anyone else who has not yet registered to speak but has decided during this hearing to register with the instructions being available at www.nyc.gov slash NYC Engage, and we'll wait for just a moment. And, Mr. Secretary, if you could be monitoring to let us know if others have registered.
Will do, Madam Chair.
And for the benefit of the Commissioners, to assure that we are all on the same, seeing the same page going forward, we will ask applicants going forward to, rather than say page forward, to let us know what page they want to, us to jump to. I think that that may be a more efficient way of assuring that we're seeing, we're all speaking to the same page. So, Mr. Secretary, any additional activity?
Chair Lago, we are checking the registration, and it appears that there aren't any additional speakers registered to speak. Yes, I have confirmation. No more speakers.
That's right. Okay, then in that event, the public hearing is closed, and I would ask, Mr. Secretary, if there's any other business before the Commission?
Just one housekeeping item, if I may, Chair Lago. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal through DCP's webpage or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office, one twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one zero two, seven one.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, and with that, this remote public meeting is adjourned. Thank you to all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes the remote public meeting of the New York City Planning Commission for Wednesday, October twenty-first, two thousand twenty. The time is ten forty-seven A M.
Thanks, and have a good day.
Have a great day, everyone.